Ashley, we ready? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, November 12, 2015. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
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 Here. May we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to your liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we start, I'd like to announce that the Board held an executive session Tuesday, November 10 of this week on personnel-related matters to the budget. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting of October 8, 2015, and I so move.
The motion is seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Thomas Bowman, Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Works has a few items on the agenda. PW1, this is a resolution number 15-034, setting fees for the collection of refuse and recyclable materials from multifamily, commercial, retail, and industrial establishments. This is a motion to approve resolution, well, it's the exact same thing, so I'm not going to read it again, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions from Commissioners, staff, residents? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
PW2 is the fees for large item pickup. This is a motion to set the fees for large item pickup as per the attached document, which was reviewed in committee, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners, staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PW3 is a bid for processing, marketing, and running our recycling transfer facility. Motion to enter into a contract with JP Mascaro, Inc., for the processing, marketing, and running the transfer facility on Fitzwater Town Road as per bids specifications, and I so move.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
That concludes our business, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Code Enforcement and Land Development Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you very much, sir. Then we'll move forward to public safety and call on Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director.
That was quick that you got to me this evening. Thank you. PS1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2101, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop/Intersection, Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, and Section 27, Parking Time Limited, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2103, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on December 10, 2015, at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Commissioner speaking.
Just very quickly, Mr. President, I just want to say profound thanks to Traffic Safety Officer Freed and to Larry Mateo and his whole department for help with this issue, a dangerous parking issue on Gravania Avenue, right on the border of Wards 11 and 14. So their help is much appreciated, as is Commissioner Schreiber's.
Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS3 is a motion to advertise ordinance 2104, County Radio Purchase. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on December 10, 2015, at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
PS4, PS5, PS6 were all items for discussion only, and so they've been deleted from tonight's agenda. So that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. I'd like to call on Mr. John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Tonight, we have five agenda items for public affairs. The first is PA1. This is Resolution Number 15-035 for PICO Green Region Grant for Jackson Park. It's a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-035, which authorizes the Bureau of Parks and Recreation to make application to the Natural Land Trust, Lands Trust, for the 2016 PICO Green Region Grant in the amount of $10,000. The funding will be used for the establishment of Meadows in Jackson Park, and I so move.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Next, we have PA2, Repair of Elevator Number 3 in Alverthorpe Manor. This is a motion to approve an expenditure of $9,797 from the contingency account number 01-01-002-5299 for the repair and return of service, return to service of elevator number 3 in Alverthorpe Manor, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Doug Wendell, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Just wanted to make a mention that the requested changes were made by the company on the contract.
Okay, they were made. Okay. Any other comments from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Next, we have PA3, Resolution Number 15-037, Substantial Amendment to Community Development Block Grant Budgets. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-037, approving the substantial amendment to Abington Township's community development block grant budgets for fiscal years 2001 through 2015 inclusive, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded.
Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions from residents? Name and address, and we'd like you to keep your comments within the three-minute time limit.
Really? Three minutes?
Thank you.
I didn't know that. Okay. Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So I took some time today. We tried to download from the block grant advertising for the hearing, and somehow, nothing quite seems to add up. So unfortunately, I did this too late to get to Mr. Struthers today to figure out, but it looks like the ones in the 920 meeting are over a million dollars. So could I ask Mr. Struthers if that's the case, that all the projects, the final amounts in the 920 advertising are over a million dollars?
Before you answer, I'd like, for the sake of time, I think it'd be better if you contact Mr. Struthers tomorrow via email or phone call or make an appointment.
Well, we're having the hearing today, right? So I kind of need to know that information. Isn't this the hearing today? This is November 12. That's when the hearing was, I mean, I'd appreciate having that information.
Hold on, please. Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, I mean, we had our committee meetings over two weeks ago, correct? If I remember correctly, I mean, we've had an exorbitant amount of time between our board meeting and committee meetings. This was discussed at our committee meetings almost over two weeks ago. Usually, they're a week before, and if there were questions that were had, I mean, this is, there was time to do that between now and then.
I didn't have those questions then, Commissioner Klein.
If there are other questions that have, if there are other questions that could come up, I'm sure Mr. Struthers would be more than happy to answer those questions.
Those questions have come up since that time, and I would appreciate having an answer from Mr. Struthers if the amounts that are being considered in this hearing for approval are over a million dollars, or are they the 706,700 that initially was?
Well, let me ask you this. Do you have one question or multiple questions?
Well, I had multiple questions and some comments, so that's the first question. This is a hearing. This is how this is supposed to go.
This is not a hearing.
It's not a hearing. It was advertised for hearing, right? It was advertised for hearing November 12?
Hold on. Let's get a legal comment.
No, it's not a hearing, and this is public comment. And so if the resident wants to make comments, they can. If the 14 Commissioners who are here have questions regarding the resolution and want Mr. Struthers or anyone else to answer those questions, then the 14 of you who are here can ask those questions. The resident can make her comments. It's not a question, and it's not public debate. It's not questions to the members of the staff. It is public comment.
All right. Well, I thought we had established in this township that simply saying thank you for your comments and not giving any answers was not the way we wanted to be. This is a very simple question, whether the amount is the 706,000 or over a million.
Well, it's not a simple question because you said you had multiple questions, so why don't we ask your questions?
Well, can we start with that one and just get an answer? That will determine how I go forward.
Tell her to finish her comments.
Okay, finish your comments first, and then we'll defer to Mr. Struthers on how he wants to conclude on this.
Okay. So, all right, so.
I won't count that two-minute exchange against you. Go ahead.
All right. So basically, in essence, what we have in this, this is three sheets I have from July from, and two of them advertised in September, where things were moved around very, very liberally. At one point, there was site preparation for a community facility. That disappeared off of the agenda. So my first comment is that I would like to have the information of how this stuff is online. We have a place online where explanations to the public can be made, okay? And then the second comment that I have is that in the moving of this stuff so liberally, it is a concern for me that Mr. Struthers is involved in one of the issues that is coming up, is the community center, which is hopefully to apply for block grant issues. So I am concerned about the conflict of interest with someone who's leading one of the projects that is in competition with another project for these particular funds when that person is in a position to move those funds around so liberally, okay? That is my first concern. The second concern is that it has been noted that it will not do us any good if we are hostile. And obviously, mentioning what I just mentioned, that I believe that there's a conflict of interest here, can be viewed as hostile, okay? So that almost sounds like a threat. Don't mention any conflict of interest. Perhaps then we'll consider you. So that is, yeah, that's my comment, is that the movement so liberally from one slot to another, completely deleting projects, completely adding projects with no explanation, no website page with an explanation why something was deleted, why something was added, that's my great concern. And the conflict of interest that I think is apparent is my great concern. And as you know, we have more than one conflict of interest, I think, in the township.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Struthers, do you care to answer that this evening, or do we defer to, address the questions tomorrow online or via a conference with the speaker?
I can speak privately with the speaker.
Okay. Thank you.
May I give Mr. Struthers a sheet with my calculations, and then we can possibly talk about it?
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Moving along to PA4, Memorandum of Understanding for the Crest Manor Housing Project. This is a motion to approve the Township of Abington executing a memorandum of understanding with other cooperating governmental agencies for the proposed Crest Manor housing development. The Township will serve as the lead agency and will coordinate all project reviews for the completion and compliance with an environmental review, and I so move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Are there any questions from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and I'm just guessing, three minutes, right? So my question here is the issue in Crest Manor that has to do with the leadership of the shepherding of the project through the agencies. It is a more than 17, I think it's 17.7 at this point. I forget exactly where it is, but it's more than 17, somewhere between 17 and 18 million dollars for 46 homes. In that budget, there surely was money for shepherding this through the process. In fact, when I asked why this was so expensive, it was because of all the hoops that one had to go through. So there are monies in this budget, some of which, $200,000 from what you just approved, is, and I didn't look if that's the last figure. That might have changed, but I think that's the last figure, $200,000 from what you just approved that came from monies for, you know, projects with low income. And so what we have here is a project that had space in it somewhere to shepherd things through the agencies and explained that's why it was so expensive. So now, what we're doing is offering our township employee in order to shepherd this through, and as I understand from the prior meeting, for free. So that's taking my money and giving it to the same people who just got $200,000 of my HUD money for my township, okay? And also, on top of the 17 million, and also, somewhere in their budget, had to have that. So I believe that if we spend time doing the work that was part of their budget, we should be reimbursed for that. Whatever time Mr. Struthers spends on shepherding that through will be time that he can't spend on other projects. So I would appreciate to have some kind of an answer on that, how we are double-dipping. They are dipping already to get the monies, and then they are double-dipping by asking us to do the jobs that they paid for for free.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Commissioner Klein? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. When this particular agenda item came up in committee, I also asked about the cost, and it was very clearly explained to me. And I think that the best part of our government, whether it be township, county, state, or federal, is the oversight. And I, for one, am very pleased that the township will have oversight in this project. I don't think it's appropriate that we take any money because the project is expensive enough, but I'm very pleased that we will have oversight over this project, and for that reason, I will be voting for it.
Good comment. Thank you. Commissioner Klein.
And if I remember correctly, Van Struthers' whole position with the township is to administer the development block grant money that we get from HUD, correct? And this is part of the development grant, block grant money that we get, or we're getting, is going to go towards Crest Manor. And within that money is, part of the money that we get from HUD is to fund his position so that he can administer that money and supervise the money that goes out through the township's, through the township's allotment, correct? So we are getting paid from HUD for exactly what he's doing. So it's not double-dipping.
It's not double-dipping.
There's nothing nefarious going on here. He's doing exactly what HUD has set up to do, and his job is being funded by HUD for this precise, for this precise purpose.
It's not accounted for in the project. There's no transparency if that's not accounted for.
Mrs. Lehman, you spoke already. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I can add, even the amount of money that's allocated for this project, wherever it goes, I have to spend the time. The township has an obligation for oversight and management of the annual federal funds that we receive. So whether or not this project exists or not, the same responsibilities exist in my office to perform.
Okay? Thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Where were we? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And we have our final item tonight, PA5. This is Resolution Number 15-040, Economic Development Multimodal Transportation Fund Program. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-040, approving Abington Township to submit an application to PennDOT for the multimodal transportation fund program. The grant submission will support the Old York Road-Susquehanna project, and I so move.
The motion has been moved and seconded.
Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
This in no way binds us to actually providing for the match money. I mean, that decision can be made at a later time. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. Is the township receiving this grant directly? Is it coming directly to the township, or is it going to a nonprofit, or is it going to another agency? Where is this grant?
If the grant is granted, it will go to the township.
To the township.
Exactly. These grants are designed for municipalities to apply, for these multimodal transportation grants.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? I'm sorry. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, this concludes the public affairs agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to turn it over to Treasurer Jay Blumenthal for the treasurer's report this evening. Nice bow tie.
Thank you, Commissioner. I always appreciate your comments on my bow ties. For the month of October, Tax Office deposited monies in the Republic Bank for all the various departments in a total amount of $677,565. As compared to last year, it's a decrease of $599,179. Year-to-date, we've collected $15,661,695. Compared to last year, it's a decrease of $891,902. And all this could arise from timing. It can arise from monies that don't go through my office that may go directly through the Finance Department. As for the real estate taxes, we collected $16,693. Compared to October of last year, it's a decrease of $13,888. Year-to-date, we're at $25,509,548, with a balance of a collective $8,383,16. We're about 1% behind last year's collections. I don't see an issue with this because by the end of the year, we'll be at our 98 collection rate, as we always are, with a balance of 2% to collect. It will go up to, be on the lean list. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Blumenthal. FC1, Motion to A, Approve the September Expenditures as Previously Circulated to the Board in the amount of $4,203,094.36 in salary and wages in the amount of $1,763,969.80. And B, Authorize Proper Officials to Sign Vouchers in Payment of Bills and Contracts as They Mature Through the Month of December 2015, and I so move.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Calmowski?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
FC2, Motion to Approve the Advance and Travel Expense Activity for September 2015 as Previously Circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expense reports were $0.00 and $1,701.83, respectively. The nine-month expenses totaled $29,480.64, and I so move.
The motion is seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC3, Motion to Approve the Clearing Fund, the Deferred Revenue Expense, Activity, and Petty Cash Balances for the Month of September as Previously Circulated to the Board. Clearing fund receipts and dispersments for the Month of September 2015 were $869.81 and $0.00, respectively. Deferred revenue, expense receipts, and dispersments for the Month of 2015 were $440,407.44 and $438,152.44, respectively, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC4, Motion to Authorize an Expenditure for Miscellaneous Expense in the Permanent Improvement Fund, Account Number 07-00-000-5999, in the amount of $72,825, to be distributed equally among the five volunteer fire companies serving Abington Township, which is an amount of $14,565 per company, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC5, Motion to Adopt Resolution Number 15-036, Increasing the Fee Collected by the Office of the Treasurer for Providing Real Estate Tax Certifications from $10 to $35 per certification, and an additional $5 for an expedited certification, beginning January 1, 2016. Said certifications will cover the current tax year plus the previous three years, three tax years, and I so move.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any questions or comments from residents?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. I were to ask the amount that one receives, that the tax collector receives yearly for tax certifications, could I get that number?
I think if you request that from the tax collector's office, he'll give it to you. I would suggest doing that either through the manager's office or directly to the tax collector through an email.
Okay. So I'm actually asking it in public because I'd like the public to hear that number, and I.
I understand that, but as you know, most of the staff members don't bring all of their information with them on a daily basis, so I would imagine that this is not something that the tax collector is equipped to answer.
We could ask him if he happens to know it.
Jay, do you know the number?
Okay. All right. So we'll get that perhaps maybe for the next meeting, and then.
I would suggest that you send an email to the tax collector and/or through the township manager's office, and that information will be provided to you.
And if I were to.
Commissioner Klein, it needs to be done through a right-to-know request.
Oh.
And if I were to ask the tax collector to share his salary with us, right now, for the public, it's a public.
Once again, if you want to fill out a right-to-know, as the solicitors mentioned, I'm sure that answer will come to you in some way, shape, or form.
Well, once again, to be resident-friendly, if you'd like to ask Mr. Blumenthal if he'd be willing to share that, that certainly could be done and save all of that trouble and township time and township money. So I'm asking if you would be kind enough to ask him. If he doesn't, I will have to go through that, and there will be steps for staff and everyone else to go through. So you might want to just ask that question first.
Treasurer Blumenthal, are you prepared to discuss all the expenditures and revenue that go into your salary tonight?
No, just the salary. Just the salary range would be fine.
I am not.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
FC 6, motion to adopt, motion to appropriate $80,000 for fund balance for legal fees, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, I'll have to recuse myself from the vote on this.
Okay. Any, again, any comments from residents?
Yeah, the funding for legal fees.
Please, come to the podium, please.
So that was one of the questions that I had for tonight was the, I mean, the excess of legal fees. We have $80,000 here, but what our excess of legal fees is year to date? So do we have any kind of an idea, a range, a number on that?
Did you want to defer to counsel? I don't know if I understood your question. You said-
So, well, here's one of my concerns. So we have, for instance, the colonade. I can't even tell you how many-
This doesn't go into any specifics.
Yeah, it does, because it has to do with legal fees, okay? So I can't even tell you how many lawsuits have been involved in the colonade, from, you know, resident lawsuits and township lawsuits and, good golly, who knows. Even in the zoning of the colonade, the lawsuits involved just show entry after entry after entry. So I'm concerned about the cost of the legal fees for a property like the colonade. And when we're increasing taxes on residents and we have one property causing that much cost-
Excuse me. Counsel, this question, the way this motion is designed, it's a motion to appropriate fund balance for legal fees, just a general, doesn't go into specifics, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so-
So I'm asking, how many?
This does not go into specifics.
I understand that. So are we saying that year to date, only $80,000 has come from the fund balance? This is why we don't want you guys having a big fund balance because you'll use it. So here's the, I mean, this is the problem, that we don't know if you take that one property and the management, the way that's been managed, the amount of legal fees that have been cost to this township because of that one property obviously must take us past what our agreement is, our standard agreement with the lawyers. Now, we have two lawyers instead of one lawyer. We used to have one lawyer, okay? So I think that information needs to be transparent, number one. And number two, we're appropriating $80,000. Is that the first and only extra appropriation above and beyond our base fee for the lawyer?
Well, I'm not going to attempt to answer that right now. The committee chair has recused himself from the motion, so I would just say, we'll take your question under advisement, and I'll present it to the township manager via the assistant township manager and see if we can get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the-
Peggy.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Myers.
Take resident comments.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? All right. I'll go back to questions from or comments from commissioners.
Thank you. I might be having a moment of brain fog. I don't know. But I don't remember discussing this in committee. Didn't-
We did.
We did.
We did. And I distinctly remember it because I actually turned it over to Commissioner Hacker at the time in Finance Committee.
Okay. Brain fog.
Okay. Any other comments?
Happens to the best of us.
Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
FC 7, motion to approve Integrity Benefits Services, Inc., Portion PA, to be the new pharmacy benefits manager effective January 1, 2016, and I so move.
Second. The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
I am happy to say that the Finance Committee has finished with its agenda and turned it back over to you, President Luker.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that concludes our formal agenda.
Pension Committee.
Oh, we have pension. I'm sorry.
It's one of my favorite committees.
Okay. Somehow I'm missing that page. I apologize. I'll turn it over to Mr. Tom Hacker, Director of the Pension Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. The Pension Committee has one item of business tonight, and this is PENS 1, and this is involving Pension Investment Consulting Services, and this is a motion to enter into agreement with the PFM Group to act as a full-service investment consultant to the township's pension plans effective November 13, 2015, and I so move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments?
Yeah, if I might, President Luker, I'll explain to fellow commissioners and the audience what we're actually doing.
If you would, thank you.
So first, I want to issue a thank you to Kevin Baron, Jeanette Herman, and Township Manager Michael Lefever, in addition to the Pension Committee members, Officer Chris Posey, Tim Clark, and Tim Zeribita, along with Commissioners Klein and Sanchez and myself. This motion tonight is a result of months of investigation and leading to a point where we have decided to change fund managers for the Township Pension Fund. We came to the conclusion after several meetings over the course of the year that the performance of the pension fund was not up to benchmark. And so we decided to investigate what our options might be, and we consulted with the county to get a sense of what they had done recently. And we decided to put this out to bid. We received 14 applications. Most of them were about this thick. And we settled on four companies to bring in for interview. And the committee sat down over a marathon session of one evening, interviewed these four companies. And in the end, we have decided to recommend to the board to go with PFM. And importantly, by signing this agreement and executing this tomorrow, at the outset, we are going to save the Township Pension Fund over $400,000 a year in fees. So right off the bat, irrespective of performance, the pension fund will save $400,000 next year. And while that is not money that can be used to offset any general fund deficit, what it does mean is that we, it ensures that we're going to not have to go back to the general fund to help meet our obligation to the pension fund over the years. We're in reasonably good shape. The township's pensions funds are funded, I think, at 88 and 91%, respectively. The national average is 72, but we have to keep it there. And so with the reduction in fees and the performance of PFM management, we're confident that we'll be able to meet our obligation to the township's retirees moving forward. And so that's what this is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hacker. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Commissioner Klein.
One key point is, I think the, one thing that should be explained is our pension funds work off of an assumed 7.5% return.
Yep.
And by the savings of $400,000, it actually brings our need of return to meet our obligations down to 7.1%, which is a huge difference in fund management. So that's the real payoff in what Commissioner Hacker talked about in the $400,000 that we're saving.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. On tonight's agenda, I am listed as being on the committee, and I had to resign from the committee-
That's right.
-due to a work commitment, and Commissioner Sanchez very kindly has taken my position.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff and/or residents? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, President Luker. That concludes our business.
I stole my thunder. I had a comment I was going to read.
I apologize, President Luker.
Not a problem. You tried it yourself on the back. I wanted to do that. So at this time, that concludes our formal agenda for the evening. I see the signing sheets do not have anyone signed in formally on any of the agenda items, so I'll open it for questions from the public. Name and address, and if you could keep your comments within the three-minute time, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So again, we are raising taxes. At this point, it looks like the taxes will be raised on the people of this township, even though you had millions and millions of dollars and should not have disposed of them without saying, "We're not going to raise taxes." We'll keep a certain amount of that aside. So one of the things that you are spending our tax money on is this economic development. And in all the economic development that's been done, and some of it has been done very nicely, everybody's to be applauded at how wonderful it looks. However, we shouldn't be paying for it. The people who profit from it should be paying for it, and our economic development should be done by having good, strong laws that encourage people, and zoning laws keep our business districts up. So if you want them all to look nice and have some uniformity, you put that in your zoning and you enforce it. You don't take it out of another business's pocket and put it there. In all the time that we've been economically developing, our taxes have done nothing but go up. So we're not economically developing in order to increase the tax base and have our taxes go down. They're just not going down. The 18 years or 19 years of no tax increase were a sham because services were taken out during that time. The colonade should have transparently in the budget a figure that it has cost the township. People need to know this because every taxpayer is paying it, and one commissioner at least is enriching himself on that debacle. So red light cameras-
Mrs. Lehman?
Yes.
No specifics, just general questions or comments.
Well, these specifics are pretty important. They affect every one of us very dramatically. And so one of the things that's been happening that should never happen in this township is every time I say something, somebody else here, and I don't doubt it will happen again tonight, actually turns it around, says it's not true, even calls me a liar last time. You allow that. You don't even suggest that if somebody says that, that I can get up and correct the record at all. They don't get any admonishment. You actually allow that. So this is not okay. All right? We had so many of these. I have a list of these, the red light cameras, okay? After I said that you had been talking about violations and that you couldn't calculate violations from a non-red light camera, Commissioner Myers said, "No, we were talking about accidents," and Chief Kelly bolstered that view. That's not true. Look at the meeting tape. It's playing now. It was all about violations. It was violations, violations, violations. You can't tell that from a non-red light camera. So that kind of stuff is just outrageous. Commissioner Spiegelman mentioned that posting the VNA, the VNA lands and so on were not going to be given away and so on. That's largely because we told the residents there, okay? That's not okay to actually turn around and say, "That's not true," because what happened at that meeting was what I described, and it was true. It was true that you accepted the concept of then having donated the lands. You didn't donate them yet, okay? You didn't accept that that was going to be done, but then you gave our township services at that meeting. Now, maybe it didn't happen, okay? I like to hope it didn't happen because I told those residents.
Wrapping it up, please. You have three minutes.
Okay. Well, I need to correct a couple other things, and I hope you'll be kind enough to let them get corrected, okay? Commissioner Klein had suggested that he did not say that he wasn't going to post and vet the rewrites.
Mrs. Lehman, this is not a personal exchange between you and each individual commissioner. If you have general statements you want to make, fine, but you've inspired-
Those commissioners dishonored me and questioned my integrity in public for all to see. I'm straightening out the record. Commissioner Klein did have that. I have his words exactly.
In all due fairness, I think they were correcting statements that they felt were erroneously made by you, or there were some discrepancies in them, and they corrected them. That's all they did.
If they didn't understand, I'd be glad to reword them, but what he said was not true, questioned my integrity, and he even called me a liar last time. That's outrageous.
No one called you a liar.
Oh, he did. Do you want me to get those words from the transcript, too?
Your three minutes are up, Mrs. Lehman. Thank you very much. But we're not going to get into an exchange over he said, she said. You made comments, they corrected what they thought were erroneous statements, and that's it.
But you won't let me correct their erroneous statements, and they have all the time in the world. They have a half an hour here that they can bash me afterwards.
Mrs. Lehman, that's not what these meetings are about. Your three minutes are up.
It's not okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Come in, name and address, and if you can keep your comments within the three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
Yes. Louise Z. Twiman, 1672 Franklin Avenue. Like to say congratulations to President Luker. President Luker, we did not use the appeal process after your family successfully had Donna Brewer's name removed from the ballot. We could have. We did not campaign against your election by talking to people, telling them not to vote for you. We could have. We did not campaign to have a write-in on Election Day for Donna Brewer. We could have. I voted for you at this past election. And now that you have been re-elected, and it has been demonstrated that your colleagues on this board have the highest respect for you, and I also think that you are a gentleman, I believe that you can convince this board to do something that they've never done before. Do something new for a change. Use our taxpayers' monies and some of your staff to help expedite getting a much-needed community center built in Ward 5. Our grassroots are still working. We're doing the best that we can, and we plan to continue working. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, 2076 Parkview Avenue. Yesterday was a celebration and recognition of veterans in this country. I have veterans here, but I'd also make a recognition of the families of those veterans. One lives down the street from me that just moved in. So I'd like to formally also say thank you to the families of those veterans. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none. I'll start with comments from commissioners, and we'll start with Commissioner Blumenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a word of thanks to constituent Judy Lounsbury, who heads a Veterans Grove Committee that takes care of the flag over in Roslyn Park. We had a nice ceremony there yesterday for Veterans Day. And to Judy and her committee, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to extend a thank you to the TTF, or better known as the Tookany, Takoni Frankfurt-Wootershead Partnership. On Saturday, November 7, Julie Slavitt and her group, along with her partners and about 100 volunteers, came out and planted over 100, or hundreds of trees and shrubs and repaired the entire riparian buffer around Jenkin Town Creek in Ethel Jordan Park. Joining us was three generations of the Jordan family, and it was a fantastic event. In fact, I believe we finished all within three hours. That's how many volunteers we had. So it was a fantastic event. Just wanted to thank her personally. And lastly, it's wet. The leaves are on the ground, so please slow down and please drive like your kids live here. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Kalnaski and North Penn VFW for a wonderful program they put on for Veterans Day. It is such a special day that we hope everyone continues to remember. There were so many wonderful vets there. And I'd like to congratulate Officer Chris Posey. Melissa and Sean Gargan received a Commander's Award, and it was just a great event. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hacker.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to extend Thanksgiving wishes to everyone here this evening, everyone watching at home, and to everyone in the community. For me, Thanksgiving, I think, is my favorite holiday, but I'm also reminded that it can be a difficult holiday for those who have experienced loss. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the loss of a very important neighbor in Ward 10 over the last week, a gentleman by the name of Bill Carr. He's a father to Stephen, Christina, and Bill, and husband to Cindy, and was active in Troop 72, and passed away after a heroic battle with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And so our hearts go out to the Carr family. Our thoughts and prayers are with them, and we wish them peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Public Works for a number of projects that they've actually expedited to get finished. Would also like to thank Public Works and Parks and Recreation for work that they did on the entrance of Albatour Park, making it safer for residents who are crossing. We do want to remember that even though it is not a street when people are crossing, we need to watch out for them. Would like to thank Lieutenant Malloy. Sometimes I don't think people realize that even on a weekend, I texted and called Lieutenant Malloy because there was a situation with a special needs person at Willow Grove Mall, and he right away helped out, contacted, and was able to be resolved in a good way. And then finally, I would like to follow up and piggyback off of Commissioner De Placido and talk about what happened at Ethel Jordan Park. It was truly amazing. 170 trees. There were weeks and weeks of planning. I regret that I was unable to be there due to a medical issue, but I was there not only in spirit. I was represented by children from the Richard Allen Preparatory Charter School in southwest Philadelphia who drove all the way up. Well, they didn't drive because they're like- all the way up. Well, they didn't drive because they're in like eighth grade. So they did come up and had a great time, and a special, special moment that we should take because while there were those generations of the Daniels and Jordan family there, about ten days before we were at the funeral of Mr. Jordan, who was Ethel Jordan's husband, he passed away at ninety years old, and he was just a tremendous part of the McKinley community. He walked a couple of miles every single day up until about three or four weeks before he passed away. So let's keep him in our memories as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Klein.
No comment at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Zappone.
Yeah, I just want to remind my residents that on Saturday, December fifth, at six o'clock at the ARZI Community Center, we'll be having the Fourth Annual ARZI Family Day Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony. And also, I want to thank Larry Mateo for assisting me in a meeting tonight, as well as Lauren resolving, trying to resolve a resident issue. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Just want to echo Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Hecker's sentiments. Thanksgiving is also one of my favorite holidays, but it is, it is a time of year where we do need to keep a special thought for, for all those who have experienced loss, and to everybody out there. It's a little bit early, but I wish everybody a very happy Thanksgiving to all the families out there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner-
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. President. Continuing the Thanksgiving vibe here, just wanted to announce, I'll be assisting with a turkey drive again, or actually turkeys and non-perishable foods. I know a lot of people do a lot of shopping during the year, earn those coupons for extra turkeys, and then you end up going to somebody else's house, and they might go to waste, or, you know, you can drop them off to me and some friends. On November twenty-second, two thousand fifteen, from two to five p.m., we're going to host it at the Brownstone at Sunrise of Abington, which is eighteen sixty-seven Susquehanna Avenue, right across from the Y M C A. And I have hard copies here. If you have any questions, just drop me a line. We will get those turkeys out to needy families, and if there's any extra, drop them off to the Interfaith Food Cupboard, and make sure nothing goes to waste. So, or if you have any families in need that you know, just drop me a line as well, and I, we will connect them. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you. Tonight, a resident came up to the podium and said that this board, on occasions, has dishonored her and attacked her integrity. Well, I for one, as many other commissioners on this board, could say the exact same thing this resident has done to us. Not only personally, but in the wards that we represent, via email, going door-to-door and making phone calls. So some of us feel that's a two-way street. Thank you.
Commissioner Markman.
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Yes, yeah, yesterday, we celebrated Veterans Day, and it was a great day. We honored nine, nine people, three from the police department here, got the Commander Award. I'd like to say Happy Veterans Day to all our veterans, and especially the Vietnam veterans. It's been fifty years, and still welcome home. Thanksgiving at the VFW will be serving dinner to any veterans that don't have a place to go, plus a, all first responders that are working on that day can come in and get a hot meal. So if you know anybody that's out there and needs a place to go, just come by the VFW, and we really appreciate that. We start that at noon. So, and all, we'll, we'll send out, all the surrounding townships will get an invitation that the police and all first responders are welcome for dinner that day. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
No comment.
Thank you. That concludes all our commissioner comments. I had one prepared statement that Commissioner Hecker stole my thunder, basically thanking the Pension Committee. What he said was very, very, very important for all of you who are watching, and also to clarify something for those watching, all these committee agendas seem like they went through very quickly and were voted upon very quickly, but they were discussed in depth at the committee levels earlier in the month. So all these were scrubbed and thoroughly discussed by staff and commissioners, so to let you know that tonight, they were finalized and voted on, but they were discussed in depth prior to tonight. The Pension Committee, I'll just reiterate the names that were mentioned. Commissioner and Director Tom Hecker, Commissioner Stephen Klein, and Commissioner Ben Sanchez, along with Tim Clark, Tim Zorbita, and Chris Posey, along with our Township Manager Michael LaFever, Assistant Township Manager Jeanette Herman, I'm sorry, and Finance Director Kevin Baron. So we all thank you. They put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work. They had volumes of material to, to go through, and it was a very laborious process, but they, they forged ahead and they went through and did it marvel shop, so we all thank you for that. So with that, if there's no further business, I'll entertain the motion to, I'm sorry.
Can I just say a happy birthday to Stephen Klein? There you go. You got the gold star today for the most motions made, but I don't know how old he is, but happy birthday. Forty-nine, fine.
Forty-nine? And if there's no further business, I'll entertain the motion to adjourn. Thank you all for attending. Thank you.
Is it true he gets Botox?
I've got to run home. Feed my baby.
Peggy, thank you, sir.
My eighteen-year-old has been in pain for the last nine and a half weeks. I miss his feeling, and he's-